It's just about time. We're going to convene the April 4th, 2022 County Commissioner meeting. This is a very exciting day. Four is my lucky number. We've got April for the fourth month, fourth day. Welcome, everybody. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chairperson, Vice Chairperson Kivitt.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful day and all the opportunities it brought. As we move into our business section, not again, we ask you for the wisdom and understanding as we move forward. In Christ's name we pray, amen. If you will, please stand with and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, Attorney Starling is going to talk to us about some changes to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. We don't like to change the agenda around very often there. This was a dynamic agenda. I'll call it, there are a couple of items we need to bring to your attention. The first is in your consent agenda. You have two sub-agreements, one with the Clinton City Board of Education and one with the Sampson County Board of Education. The Health Department has received some federal ARPA funds that are going to be used to fund school nurse compensation with both of the school systems and the amount of about roughly $97,000 for each system. The Clinton City School System asked a week or so ago if bonuses, retention bonuses could be included in the allowable uses. We explained that that would have be have something we'd have to get clearance before we could just add that language to the sub-agreement. We did get in writing from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Thursday afternoon that we could include that. So that's the only change. The word reasonable bonuses has been added in the allowable uses section of those agreements.
And that's ARPA money?
Yes, sir, federal money.
Do we know how much they got, the schools got?
Off the top of my head, I do not, no, sir, sorry. The other issue is you have a Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Consortium agreement in your agenda packet. Cumberland County, late last week, asked for some revisions to that agreement after the agenda had already been published. We reviewed those requested changes. I don't have an issue with them, so you should have a new copy of that agreement incorporating those changes.
We emailed it to everybody.
Yeah, those would be the only changes to the agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Okay, open a public hearing or have Mr. Brinkley come forward on the rezoning issue.
Good evening. The rezoning proposal is a proposal for the Daniel Evans rezoning. This is a property that was reviewed by the Planning Board at the March 14th meeting. This property is 2.91 acres. It's located on East Darden Road. The property is currently zoned commercial. This is a proposal to rezone to the residential agricultural zoning district. The parcel is served by county water and individual septic system, and the parcel is within the Sampson County land use designation as being rural residential agricultural land use. At the Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board recommended unanimously approval of this rezoning request based on the fact that they found it to be consistent with the land use plan. If there's any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Do we have any questions? No one has signed up to speak, but is there any one in the audience that has a question or a comment concerning this? If not, do I have a motion that would include the zoning consistency statement on page three? Oh, yes, we need to close the public here, thank you. And now, do I have someone that would give me a motion to include the consistency statement on page three of our agenda packet?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
Thank you.
Show unanimous. Okay, at this time, Mr. Starling is going to talk to us about the Mid-Carolina Workforce Development.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a, an interlocal agreement between Cumberland County, Hornet County, and Sampson County to enter into a workforce development consortium that will be called the Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Consortium. It will replace the current existing workforce development organization that the county has been a part of. We think this is a wonderful opportunity for Sampson County. There's a six-month termination provision and, you know, in speaking with staff and in speaking with Mr. Hamby, we really don't see a downside here. I'm not sure if Mr. Causey has anything he wants to add to that. I know he's been more involved in those discussions than I have.
The only comment I would make is I'm very pleased with what we're doing with our new Council of Governments, and they first said or first got the chance to start with Cumberland with workforce. Because of some of the challenges we felt like we had, we felt like this was a great opportunity. And I don't know that this proposal did not come from us requesting that we give it some thought and consideration. I think Hornet County had the same view that we did.
I'm very excited about moving forward with this. And Ms. Holder is the one that sort of pushed me to start with. She said, you sure you want to do something else? I said, you're absolutely right, we need to make them move, and this is going to be really good for Sampson County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Show unanimous. Okay, moving on to the public water system items, Mr. Lynn Reynolds and Matthew West.
Matthew West couldn't attend tonight. We got David Ross, who's his assistant, and he's well versed in all these requests. The purpose is consider actions related to expanded water system in the county as we continue to pursue funding and permission to proceed with these projects. Number one is the adoption of resolutions supporting applications for state grant funding for the Ivanhoe Water System project. The second one is the iron and manganese treatment project. And the third is the Johnston County Phase Two project. There's new grant funds available from DWI that we propose to use to construct new water supply systems in these areas in Ivanhoe. Ivanhoe is considered a distressed area. We were led to believe that the max on this project would be $5 million per project, per round. Due to Ms. Leitha Lee's inquiry in Raleigh, we found out last week it is actually $15 million. So, thank you, Ms. Lee. The, part of the funds out of that 15 million is for the, from the Clement Expansion. So, the Ivanhoe system would qualify for about $13.3 million max on this round, which, if it is granted, we should be in good shape. We also plan to apply for a grant to pay off some low-interest loans for the iron and manganese system and for the Johnston County Interconnect Phase Two. So the loans that we've been, that's been approved, these grants, could pay for that too, to pay those loans off. We'd ask that you adopt a project ordinance for the Clement Area Expansion Project for $1.717 million. And David will discuss that in a few minutes. And we would ask that we'd have authorization to begin recruitment of areas to be funded by the State Capital Infrastructure Fund grant funding. The county has also received $9 million in state capital infrastructure funds, and we're ready to start marketing and get it on, get it on the road. We're asking that you adopt resolutions for Ivanhoe Water System, iron and manganese system in the Johnston County Interconnect Phase Two, adopt the capital project for $1.717, and authorize staff to begin recruitment, beginning with Lake Wood School Road. That was the highest rated route in the system, and continuing through the list until the funds are expended. David, would you like to go?
Hey, so yeah, we've been working with Lynn on trying to secure the funding. And so we figured out that the Department of Environmental Equality, Division of Water Infrastructure has the best opportunities for us, as they are the ones that administer the American Rescue Plan Act and also the state reserve funds. And as Lynn pointed out, we have three projects that we're going to apply for, and each one of these applications is a point-based system. So we feel confident that we have a good amount of points for each different application. So I was going to go a little bit more detail for each application, starting with the Ivanhoe Water System. So this project would be to construct a whole new public water system in the Ivanhoe area. And the purpose of this would be to provide potable water service to residents in the area. This project would require the development of a new, complete new water supply and distribution system. So that would include wells, water storage tanks, generators, any associated electrical systems, and also water mains, of course, to connect to the residents. And as part of this, you also have to connect the residents to the water surface, to the meter. So, to develop this new public water system and supply must be provided as an initial project. So the initial project we're going to try to shoot for with those funds that we'll get will be for the wells and water storage tank. And then we'll use the rest of the money toward expanding the system as far as possible with the water main extensions and tying it to residents. So that is the route we plan to take. As part of this funding application, we will submit to request a grant only, so no loans, only grant only funding from DQ. And if a funding offer is made, the county at that time can determine whether or not they want to accept the funding, and we can move on from there. So I guess it is recommended that Sampson County, in the form of a motion, approve the attached resolution for the Ivanhoe area that is required as part of the Division of Water Infrastructure project I just described.
Do we have any idea how long it will take to find out if we are awarded that grant?
So, the applications are due at the end of the month, and it's typically about three-month periods. I think around September timeframe is when we hear and find out about the applications. And we feel very strongly about the Ivanhoe Water System as far as the point-based system go. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question I have, of course, I'm for the grants, whatever we can get. The question I've got is what percentage of the people in Ivanhoe do we think we'll be able to cover with this 17 million? Is it?
So it will actually be, like Lynn said, there's up to $15 million. And part of that $15 million is allocated toward the Clement Area. So I think it was 1.7 million. So that leaves approximately 13 million that could be allocated to that. And we hope that, I think it's up to 75% that has to be allocated toward resources to help supply water to that area.
So we don't know how many customers that would take care of?
I think the initial estimate, how many we?
About 200, just.
Yeah. We feel.
200.
200 connections.
And what about the maintenance on that system? How would that?
We hadn't, it depends on how we run it. If we put wells, if we place wells down there right now, we're looking at some other options. Or if we place some wells down there and we place some of them in the northern part of the system and actually tie garland to it and get more points, and that eliminates us from having to buy water from garland.
Sounds good, yes.
And if we get, we can go ahead and get it in, or when we get it in, will we have the flushing problem? Or will their usage be enough to take care of all that?
It's hard to tell. It's going to be, we almost need 80, 90% participation. And it, I don't know if we'll get it, we're going to try. We can put automatic flushers at some of the dead ends and flush the lines and just make that a routine where it flushes like an hour a week. We'll do that now in a few places and it works.
So, that would, the maintenance on it, that would, that would be additional maintenance that we would have to perform as far as the county.
On the automatic flushers, they run off a battery and you, they come on like 2:00 in the morning for about 10 hours. So there wouldn't, we wouldn't have too many, we wouldn't have people going down there much.
Okay.
Except for a wheel.
And another point too is that we're going to try to interconnect as much as possible to avoid just dead ends out there, so that would help consistently turn the water over versus it's in staying empty in the pipes.
So this grant would be up to 15 million, but we don't know that we'll get 15 or 13 or eight or whatever, okay.
I promised the residents down there at a meeting a few nights ago that I would do everything I could. I've even been to Washington last week, and.
Bless your heart.
That's where the money came, you know, that's where the money comes from.
Right.
We're chasing every avenue we can. This kind of fell in our lap. We knew that there was a possibility of 5 million. It ended up being up to 15 million. So thank you, Ms. Lee.
That's good.
Thank you for all your hard work. Could I say something? Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think that we will have any problem whatsoever in getting the 200 people to sign up for this order, because we have been wanting it for a little over 20 years. And they have been complaining for 20-some years that I know of. And so it's time, now is the time. And I'm so glad, and I believe everybody ought to stand up and just clap your hands and be grateful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Oh, no.
I would like to say, nothing's guaranteed. It is up to the grant committee. So, but we're trying, we're doing everything we can do.
And, and that's the point too, with it being a point-based system, the more of these points that we can try to get, the better chance, our chances are. And this is one of the higher point ones we've had, so there's a good chance. But like Lynn said, it's not 100% at this point.
Right.
Because I'm sure everybody's going to be going after the grants too.
Yeah. We're going to vote on all three of these separately?
Uh, yes, because there's three separate.
So the, the, I think, tell me if you wanted it differently. Can we do the Ivanhoe System Project, Manganese Treatment, and Phase Two all in one? Or do you need those?
They need a separate resolution for each.
So you're broken up, so you'll need, you're actually doing then, what, five? Five actions?
All of the resolutions are separately in the agenda. So each resolution is in the agenda.
One A, one B, and one C. So you'll need a, you'll need a, one on the Ivanhoe Water System Project, one on the iron and manganese treatment system, one on the Johnston County Interconnect Phase Two. Then you're going to do the Clement Area Expansion Project with DWI. And then you're going to authorize the staff to begin recruitment in areas to be funded by the State Capital Infrastructure Fund grant funding.
Do you mind if we go ahead and vote, and then we'll let you talk about the rest of them if you'd like?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, I move that we adopt the resolution supporting applications for state grant funding for the Ivanhoe Water System Project. All in favor? I think we had one too many. Okay.
I'll go ahead and go through the list if you'd like me to. So the next one is the iron and manganese treatment system, I believe. So this project is actually already in construction. And through the funding application, we found out that there's the potential to get rid of the principal, or the forgiveness, not forgiveness, the low-interest loan and make that a principal forgiveness loan or a grant. And so, the project, I think we brought it before the board a few times at this point, after we received bids and everything. But it's to create a water treatment system at the Phasen Highway site and construct a water main along Phasen Highway and modify existing water mains along Old Warsaw Railroad to allow raw water from Old Warsaw Road to the Phasen Highway site to treat all of it. So this project is actually, like I said, currently under construction through the SRF program. And the Division of Water Infrastructure's number for this is WIF 1962. And it's all, I think 50% of it approximately is the low-interest loan. So this funding application will be to submit to request grant funding to replace the low-interest loan. And I got rough numbers for the total amount of loan that we currently have. It's 883,000 of the SRF loan and 337,000 of the SRP loan. So we would be trying to get that money as part of this application. And if we have, if we need to go after any additional money after the bids came in, we can also do that as part of this project. So the resolution would be, I guess I recommend Sampson County, for a motion to adopt that attached resolution required by Division of Water Infrastructure for iron and treatment system.
For a second, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
That's number two. Go number three.
Okay, I think this one is the Johnston County Interconnection Phase Two. So in 2019, a bulk water agreement was signed with Johnston County, and it identified two different air connections. One is at Easy Street, and that one has already been completed as part of the Phase One of this project. And that project also had the booster pumps and sort of the infrastructure improvements in order to do this Phase Two, which is along Oak Grove Church Road is the interconnection. And we're also doing some water main improvements along King Road to help the hydraulics support all this infrastructure. So the current program that is being used to fund this is the SRF program. The project number for that one is WIF 2003. And it was originally funding 100% low-interest loan, so none of it is grant at this point. So this funding application will be to replace the low-interest loan in the amount of $3.1 million for grant. And I like to say that the reason we're able to do these two projects and all the other ones is that you have to make sure that you have not done any reimbursements to date from the state, and these two projects will fit into that category. We haven't done any reimbursements from the state yet. And we plan to wait and see if we can get the money to change that into grant and hopefully get rid of some of the low-interest loans for the county. So it's recommended that Sampson County form a motion to adopt the attached resolution required by North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure for the Johnston County Interconnection Phase Two. And if there are any questions?
Well, note, I make a motion that we seek those grant funds.
Okay.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, I guess start talking about the Clement Area would be next. So Clement Area, there was a state-directed grant of $1.717 million that was allocated to the county to construct the water mains in the Clement Area. And this is to improve the low-pressure issues in that area. That would be accomplished by creating a loop at the end of a dead end line currently and also interconnecting some of the water mains down in that area to help draw more water around versus it being necked in one area. So it also will help improve water quality in that area as well. And another benefit of this, of course, would be it provides water services to additional residents in that, so more revenue from that as well. And at this point, the state has issued a letter of intent to fund, and it included a list of project milestones and dates. The major milestones included all permits being obtained and submitted a package to DWI by August 1st of this year, and then advertised for bid April 3rd of next year, execute contracts by May 1st, and all final reimbursements to be done by December 31st, 2026. And so to achieve this milestone, we recommend the county grant authorization in the form of a motion for Du Barry to begin survey and design of this project.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Thank you. One more?
All right, I'll go ahead and just, so I'm going to mark. So as mentioned, the county received directly allocated state funds that will be used to improve the water system. And I think Lynn had brought to your attention the list that he had for the projects he's proposing. And these are all based on a customer per mile basis. And, you know, ordering from the ones that have the most customers per mile, which made it the most financially feasible and to the least. And so I think a score of 10 or more is required to be feasible, and that's the way that we're starting. The first project's going to be on Lake.
Lake Wood School.
Lake Wood School Road. And so to start this, the county plans to start marketing campaign for these proposed projects. And the campaign will give each of the proposed project areas, I think, 60 days for people to sign up. And as part of that, there's other campaigning is for social media they're going to do, I believe.
Newspaper.
Newspaper, and then a community meeting as well.
Community meeting.
And that's, that's what we plan to start the date on. We're also planning to do some door hangers with numbers and information on who to call to get the applications into us. And then at the end, we'll also have to have a deposit from each person to be assigned on this list. And if we are not able to reach the 10 customers per mile, then we go down to the next, and then the next, and the next, until we do. And at that point, we'll start design and proceeding with each project until the funds are allocated accordingly. And so I guess recommend that the county provide authorization in the form of a motion to begin marketing campaign as described.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Appreciate all of your hard work, all of you work really hard. We're going to have a public hearing with economic development items. Mr. Stephen Barrington, please come forward, and Joel Starling will be here to assist.
Thank you. And prior to my arrival, the Board of Commissioners contracted with Global Location Strategies to identify sites across the county that may be suitable for industrial development. The property that you have before you is one of those sites that they, that they identified as something that's of good potential for, for the county. Since that point of time, and that, again, that was part of my arrival, since that point of time, we have spoken to the owners, the Warren family heirs. And we initially spoke to them, and the time was not right. That was two years ago, and recently they've come back and said they're ready to move forward on, on the sale of their property off of I-40 in New Grove Exit 341. We feel like that's a very good site. In fact, over the last couple of years, our team has, has really hosted a number of folks to the county companies and investors and developers to look at different places here within the county. And one of the things that kept coming up is should you have I-40 property, interstate property? And really, these companies have not done anything east of, on the interstate east of 95. They said that they would be interested in, in certainly looking at those sorts of properties for consideration of their project, should the infrastructure also be there. And so that's, that's what's happened over that period of time. One of the things we've also done is, and I want to, want to thank Susan Holder for putting this to our attention, was is a grant that it does allow for land acquisition. We don't know that it's going to be eligible for, this property would be eligible for that particular grant, and we are reviewing that at this point of time to see if, if, if there is a, if there is an opportunity to lessen the investment by the Board of Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners decided to move forward in that direction. So before you today, you have a, you have a kind of a recommendation, recommendation from our team that we would like to option, and Joel has sent plenty of emails to you, and our team has sent plenty of emails related to an option agreement for this particular property. Again, it's right at 210 acres. We feel like it's probably the single best commercial and industrial site or has that potential in the county as of today.
Do I have any questions?
What, have you talked with Newton Grove concerning their sewer issues?
We, thank you, that's a great question. We do know that that is one of the areas. In fact, part of our due diligence is we will have more conversations with, with Newton Grove and their team. We have spoken to their Public Works Director or official, Mr. Glenn Holland, and noticing what they have, we know that what their system is currently will not sufficiently support the full build-out of that project. However, it will take us to the first phase, likely take us through the first phase of that project with the opportunity to, to work with, with the town to increase the wastewater that they have within their community, or decide on another opportunity or another alternative to, to meet those needs.
What is, what is Newton Grove's opinion of this? Are they in favor of us purchasing this project?
Well, we, there are, and I would, you can ask three commissioners here today from the town of Newton Grove, but I'm not going to put them on this phone, obviously. But we do feel like that this has received decent attention and good attention, and there's a lot of support for this sort of development in that area.
And if there are no questions from the other commissioners, we have someone signed up to speak for this. And we will not vote until we've addressed both of these public hearings since it's all interconnected.
Yeah, a couple of things to add in terms of the, the option agreement itself. You saw the flurry of activity. This, this was negotiated, I mean, I'll, I'll be candid with you. It was negotiated on a, on a, on a pretty quick turnaround over, over the span of about two weeks, from my perspective. So negotiations were ongoing even today in terms of some of the, in fact, the, the copy that you have in front of you now, the seller's counsel and I were on the phone this afternoon talking to. talking about, you know, an adjustment that we wanted to make with one of the descriptions of one of the properties. So it's been dynamic. There's 10 parcels, it's 210.85 acres. The sellers are going to be required to do the rezoning for two of the parcels with the town. The agreement is written in such a way that if they're unable to accomplish that, the option money will be refunded to the county. The option money will be held in escrow until such time as the closing. And there are a couple of other conditions that they've got to satisfy in order to, you know, proceed to closing.
And so this is all or none?
That is, the owners are from the late 60s to the older, late 70s. This is, at the end of the day, none of them live here in Sampson County. Well, one does, but maybe transitioning in a way for more of the time. They would like to, this is the preference of the family.
I think that's correct, Commissioner Kivett. This is, this is an all or none deal. There, I think it's correct to say there are some parcels that maybe we didn't necessarily identify ourselves that are, that are part of this deal, but it's
That's correct.
It's a package deal.
Sorry.
Do I have any questions? We do have one person that has signed up to speak, Mr. Dwayne West.
Please, please, thank you.
It's been about 20 years since I stood before Board of Commissioners. So I'm a little, I get nervous, you'll know why. I've done it enough to, I don't know how many we had to show up. I saw three and I thought there was another one or two from Newton Grove coming and they can address the town's position on this. Madam Chair, I'm Dwayne West. I live at 132 West Grove Street in Newton Grove and I appreciate the board offering an opportunity on this. I was just talking to Ray a little bit. I think this is my 10th year on the Economic Development Advisory Board. I rotated off at the end of June, so I guess I finally wore them out or they wore me out. I don't know which, but I want to add my support for this project. It's something that I would urge you to support. It is a significant opportunity in regard to cost. It is not cheap, I understand that. But one I believe is worth the cost of economic development in the county and the town. And it's a long-term investment that will pay dividends for many years after we're gone. Not only for Newton Grove, but to the town, to the county. It's a rare opportunity to find farmland for sale around Newton Grove, I can promise you that. If it is, it's between farmers and rightfully so. And this falls in that category. It's never occurred since I've been there and I've been there a right good while now. And I don't think I'll live long enough to see it occur again. So it is, the timing's right. We talked about the water in the southern end of the county, it sounds like that's past due and those folks need some help, but this is an opportunity we just don't need to turn our back on. I know there's a lot of needs in the county and this is just one of those, but I've learned a little bit over the last 10 years from staff and listened to you folks talk. We can't continue to make improvements in the quality of life, school buildings and many, many other needs, replacing infrastructure that's wearing out every day on farmland tax and homeowners tax alone. It won't work. You all know we're one of the higher ones in the area anyway. And so it's something I think we need to look at as a way to offset that. In Viva and many other of our industrial partners in the county have proven to be a tremendous asset to us and have added to that. And there are others to come, some good pending projects from what I hear that will add even more to it. But several years ago, you folks, and I applaud you for it, made a commitment toward economic development. Not only did you make a verbal commitment, you made a financial commitment and that had never been done in the 10 years I've been on here, Clark. And you were chairman when that went on. I thank you for that and I think it says a lot about the priorities this board's placed on improving our economics in the county. I'm sure there were some people that were naysayers and probably still are on the fact that you funded and set money aside purely for economic development, but you saw a need and you had the faith and you stepped out with some knowledge and faith and went ahead and did that. And I would just urge you tonight to do it again for this project because it's well worth it and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. West. Is it, no, Mr. West is the only one we have signed up, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment?
Chair, can I say one more thing?
Yes, go right there.
Yeah, and this is really based off Dwayne's, Mr. West's comments of, excuse me, Dwayne, for saying your first name. The, I was talking to Jim Johnson, really, right now at this point, the commercial to residential ratio is, in terms of the tax base, is 28% to 72%. As part of our goal as, for economic development is how do we raise the non-residential tax base? We know that really there are two major ways in which we can help support the revenue within the county. One is the Board of Commissioners can choose to, to raise the taxes. I don't think anyone wants that. We don't want you to do that because it's already one of the higher rates across the region. But another way is how do we increase the, the non-residential development here? And what we're doing today, what we've been doing over the last few years and your commitment and your investment over the last few years, what I see that we're doing is we're setting the table. We're setting the table so that when somebody's ready to come, we can, we can support them, sit them down and just, we all win as a result. So anyway, just want to make that comment.
Thank you very much. Close the public hearing. And we're ready to vote. Do I have a motion?
Make such a motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, good gracious, yes. Can I third it? Can I third it, Susan?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I appreciate the effort that the Economic Development Group has put in. And the concerns I have is the looming issues that we don't know with this inflation and what all's going on. However, Stephen, you hit the nail on the head when you said we got the highest tax rate of any contiguous county. And we're looking ways, we've talked about this before, all of us, ways to generate revenue without tax increase. And so that's why we put the money we did into economic development. Now, I've not always been in favor of that because I'm from here, I've got a 64-year-old company that my family started. We didn't get a dime from anybody on anything. And at one time, I was, I was opposed to any of this. However, the light went off and I realized that we're not growing in residential. The county population is, matter of fact, decreased according to the last census. So we've got to do all that we can for economic development. And of course, that's one reason we hired you, Stephen, to lead this thing. And of course, Ray, we brought you into that too. And I appreciate the job you're doing. The timing on this is just terrible. However, I don't know how we can not do this for the future of all the children as well as all the residents in the county. So that's, that's my humble opinion. It's a hard thing. I have pondered over this ever since this came up and I'm ultra-conservative, but we'll have to figure a way to do it. So I appreciate the job you've done.
And thank you again for serving on the Economic Development Board so long. I appreciate that. And Commissioner Goblin, one second.
Surely when we, as the commissioners, look at this happening, it's because of the future. And as much future as how we looked at Ivanhoe, who did not have water, but yet we're looking to get water. If this commission board continue to do what it's doing, we're doing service to the people and that's what we're here for. And I thank y'all for what you're doing and I thank these commissioners for building these things together.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Now we have the vote. All in favor? Show it unanimous. Okay, now we're gonna, I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good. I was just adjusting my microphone.
Okay, have you got something to say? Okay, now we're gonna, did you want to talk to us about the proposed amendment for the purpose, for the property?
Yeah.
It's all inclusive, but we have to have another, another public hearing for this.
We do have to have another public hearing and Mr. Clack does have an actual budget amendment in the, as well. The resolution that the board has adopted addresses the expenditures, but I do think it would be a good idea to actually adopt that budget amendment as well.
Yes, the, and of course, this public hearing is to hear about the total cost of the land, which will include the county appropriating $2 million in fund balance to increase the economic development budget to pay for the purchase of this land if the, if we ultimately, after our due diligence, find we need to purchase that this land is adequate for our needs.
And I'm hoping we still find some grant money.
And David, that was the 2 million plus additional 80?
The 80,000 is coming out of the Economic Development Reserve we set aside.
That's right. The 65 of that is for due diligence activities. We've still, you know, excuse the expression, we got a lot of tire kicking still to do on this before we, you know, this is an option agreement. The beauty about that is if you get into a situation and you discover that there's some issue with the property, some environmental contamination that you had no way of knowing about, you're not all in yet at that point. And I don't have any indication that's going to happen, but this gives us an opportunity to do the things that we need to do to fit the property further.
Nobody else has any comment from the audience? I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any?
Motion that we adopt the resolution to, that Mr. Clack spoke about for funding for this project.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lee's second. All in favor? Show it unanimous. This is the night of public hearings. We'll have a public hearing. Susan Holder, talk to us about naming private roads?
Yes, there are two roads that the Road Naming Committee would recommend for your consideration. PVT 1446, 5404, 241 is proposed to be named Kildare Court. PVT South Main 501 is proposed to be named Eleven Farms Road. And as per our typical policy, these are the requests from the property owners and/or residents as proposed names.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak in this public hearing. Do I have anyone that has a comment on these? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to name the private roads as recommended. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows you unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Vice Chair Kivett?
Yeah. I'd like to make another comment about our purchase of the property. We're using the Rainy Day Fund basically to fund this and this is not taken away from any other department. This is, in the long run, is going to help us provide the services that continue to provide the services that we are. So it's not going to be detrimental to any department other than to help them. I want to make that point. The other thing, let's see, at this time, I'd like to move that we appoint William Sellers to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Back to you.
Okay, that was quick. Looking at the consent agenda, does, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, second. First, a motion.
Third.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, that rolls us all the way down to the county manager's report.
Madam Chair, the biggest thing I would like to share with the board and give you an update, you probably know this, we are diligently working on budget preparations and we're going to follow, try to follow with your agreeance, the same model that we used last year, that we will want to present the budget in late May in order to have a public hearing with your, with your regular monthly meeting in June and then we'll be at the board's leisure as to far as whatever budget workshops you want to have and the voting. It may very well be possible that at the May meeting, in order to make the timeframes work out, you have to have a 10-day notice of your public hearing. And so we may ask you for authorization to let us pub, and may publish the notice of public hearing a day or two ahead of whatever day we choose to present the budget and make sure we've met the advertising timeframes. Is that a fair statement, Susan? And so I think you can pretty well tell what Mr. Clack and others will be working on for the next several weeks.
Thank you for all that hard work. Okay, we're good down to the public comment period. Ms. Holder, if you will remind us of.
Certainly, I'll be glad to, Madam Chairperson. As we do with each regular board meeting, the board can, can set aside a period for public comment. The board determines and announces the time that is available. Given the board's previous procedures, that would be three minutes. Each person should come to the podium, identify themselves by name and their address. They will be given three minutes to speak. We will start a timer when you start speaking. After two minutes have, the light will turn green. After two minutes have elapsed, the light will turn yellow to warn you there's one more minute left and then it will chime, a very pleasant chime will ring when your three minutes are done. Obviously, you are not allowed to defer your time to anyone else. You can only use your time. And it, we follow in the order of the persons that signed up. At the conclusion of that list, anyone who has not signed up can request to speak at that time.
And if you continue to, then the floor opens and you can just file. Just joking. Tanya Montgomery Gilliam is first on the list. State your name and address.
Tanya Montgomery Gillam, 817 West Second Street, Garland. And I am speaking on the water issue. We are elated that you all voted in our favor. However, we do still have the issue of the tapping fee. The lower end of Sampson County is economically challenged. We have retirees, we have people that are working to exist and the rate that is proposed is insane. And we're asking that the board vote to go back to that 2017 rate to incentivize people to sign up because almost $1,300 is, is too much, especially in a distressed area such as Ivanhoe. And so we would hope that in order to incentivize people to sign up, and they will sign up if they can get the same rate that was given to people in 2017. They need the water, they want the water. Costs should not be a prohibitive measure for people to get something that is a basic right, which is clean, healthy, drinkable water. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Mr. Edward Gillam?
I'm not going to drink this, okay? Just want to let you know that. My name is Edward Gillam. I live at 817 West Second Street, Garland, North Carolina. I first want to say, can the residents of Ivanhoe please stand up again? And I want to say to first, I want to thank God for this opportunity and for what he's done for us and just making this dream a reality for this water and having such a good commissioners and everything, board and everything, Mr. Reynolds, your staff, I really appreciate everything you guys have done to bring water here. But I really want to say that Ivanhoe brought water to Ivanhoe. The reason why I say that is because we did a lot of research, we did a lot of praying, we did a lot of groundwork. Mr. Russell Devon, for years and years, he's been helping and trying to get things done and I thank you, sir. I thank you, the people who's just out there with everything and I really appreciate everybody that's really helping out. Now, I do have one question about the grants. One important thing is, I know from what I'm, my understanding is, we have like two periods, I, but, thank you. With the grant, the grant application, don't we have two different phases? We can do one in, in spring and one in the fall, from what I'm understanding. If we don't get all the money for the one in the spring, which I heard that we'll have the actual actual, if we got the grant in July, can we reapply in the fall of the year to get the rest?
It's my understanding that you can do it each quarter.
Right.
And now the grant that we, that the board approved tonight, there is no tap fee.
Okay.
So that answers that.
That's good.
Now, there's two lists that I was on, one is for the grant we just were going to apply for, and we should know way before we go down the list on the point system, where they would have to pay a bounty. We should know by the end of August whether the pre-tap would be awarded.
Okay, you heard him.
I'll restart it, don't worry about it.
All right, thank you.
I've got it from here.
So we're going to attack two systems, two different ways. One is, there's two systems in this county that qualify for the, what do you call it? The, the distressed areas?
Yes, that was right.
And that is the mints road area, and of course, the first one that we've, you've agreed to support is the Ivanhoe community. There would be no tap fees if those two areas are awarded, a grant is awarded.
Right.
If we do not have that award, we'll still have it on the list to go with the tap fee charge of $500. And the reason why that is, we're having to charge everybody else in the county $500, and, or up to $900 starting July, one. So they would be grandfathered in at a $500, so it's still a good deal even though it's a lot of money, so.
Now, my, my question is to you is, now, I've been hearing different things about $75 to $100 before the project even starts in the past. Like, I'd had one of my friends to tell me that he only paid like $100 before the water was even ran in his place for a tap-on fee. I mean, is that any truthful?
There was at one time a $75 tap fee.
Right.
Mr. Gilliam, this is actually a public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Understood, understood, I can talk to him later. I just want to thank everybody for what you've done.
And to get his figures to be able to explain, if you need to give him a call or talk to his office.
Yeah, I'll talk to him later.
This is a public comment.
But I just want to thank everybody, thank you, God bless everybody and whatnot, and thank you for the work we've done.
Thank you. Lacy Bell?
You're not, I, part of our procedures, is you're not allowed?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Certainly a pleasure to be back before the commissioners once again. Some of you I haven't seen in quite a while, but I'm glad to be back here. Mr. Carr, it's good to see you. I'm Lacy Bell, Jr., I live at 2812 East Darden Road, and that's in Face, North Carolina. I'm here this afternoon to request an extension to the access of Sampson County municipality water, the water supply that the county has. Currently, we, at my house on 2812 East Darden Road, we are using well, a well system there, it's a deep well system, but we have to have a filtration system on that well. Research has shown that well water can contain bacteria, lead, arsenic, chlorine, and other organic compounds. I wanted to just take just a minute to look at the pictures that my wife has shared with Ms. Holder, and you can see some of the, the rust that we have in our house from the water, and not only do I have it, my neighbors have it too. Just take a look at it, just real quickly. As you can see, the pictures, this is what we deal with on a daily basis. Additionally, there's a bottle of water, I think she brought there. You can see that some of the water is, is a brownish-looking color, it has fragments in the water, and it settles at the bottom of that bottle there. Though we don't actually drink the water that we get from our well, we actually have to purchase the water. We're the, we're one of Walmart's favorite customers. Would you want to drink that kind of water, or have that in your home? We certainly don't, and we've dealt with it a long time. I used to work for Sampson County, worked with them 31 years, many of you know, and I remember when the, the county initiated their water system, and I immediately applied. I think I had $50 or $75 one, and I rushed on over there and got hooked up with it, and I found out that, you know, I would not be able to receive the water later on. The water line comes down my road, and it's as far as from here to the highway, to the highway, from where I live at. They have a fire hydrant there, and that fire hydrant number is Water Point 5, and it's for Piney Grove. During the initial stage, I did say that we pay, I think I paid $75, somewhere around there, my neighbor also paid his fee, and we never, we got our little flags and we put them out, but we never got access to the water. So that's just how close we are, and we like to get that water line extended. Since it's been, it's been there on that road, we've had other residents to move in, and they've been able to tap into it, but we haven't been able to tap into it because it stops, it stops at a little run just before it gets to my house, and it's less than 500 feet from my house. And I know there's some other neighbors on that road want it also.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, Patricia Carr.
I'm sorry.
She passed.
You passed, okay. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment that did not sign up? If not, we're going to recess to close session. Does that? Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Thank y'all very much, and we'll see you on the 20th.